I did email John Heps earlier today. He said, "No, no, no," because they... I used to have my RV and I didn't want to go to my regular outdoor. But that thing was putting like this in the parking lot. Now I just go like, I go through like Safari Explorer. But you're not gonna get an alert. He said, "Okay, good." I wasn't sure because he went with all homes or all I see. Right.
All right, hold on a minute, order. Please rush. Certification applies.
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Atari Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the Council of Lakeview at least 28 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable confidence that this meeting will be available to the public inspector, meeting meets the criteria of the open public meeting that.
Thank you.
Mr. Grunberger, Mr. Harfield, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Stable, Mr. Kleinstock, Mr. Herschel, Mr. Reiner, Mr. Eisen, Mr. Grunberg, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. Confirmation is needed, Mattis?
Yes, the recording is on.
Okay, can we swing to the officials, please?
Chairman, if I just may let the board know that our next meeting, I will not be here, so Terry will be taking the attendance and nothing that goes, um, the nation with them. And at the end of the evening, as usual, the maintenance men clean up all these plants. Um, if you could try and put a pile for them, because they're gonna sit in my room, how the maintenance men clean them up, or I'll hold weeks like a back, and they tend to shove them in the boxes. So just try and keep it orderly next week, please.
You'll be watching.
Thank you. Oh, okay. I'll be watching.
I'll get a little sad.
Okay, memorialization resolution. Okay, let's move forward to the memorialization resolution.
The first resolution is S B twenty-two seventy-seven, as an extension of a minor subdivision. I did mark on your individual agenda so that X if you were not present, and that's what we're carrying.
And do we have a motion?
Can I get both of you?
Motion and second. And I had seen, okay. Next one is?
S B twenty-two eighty-eight, current creation method evened up. It's a major site plan. Uh, I did get a comment from one of the board members who's not here tonight. There's no new numbers on the pages, but in the back where it says, uh, conditions of approval. There are two lines. The first reads, "The sinkhole shall be de-restricted for shabbat's filling." Um, his concern was that the board had wanted the entire basement restricted, whether it's being used as a sinkhole or something else, that it was intended to be restricted for weekends only. And similar to that, uh, second line says, "Advocate is restricted from renting out the sinkhole." He would prefer it as a basement or basement as well as a sinkhole. So there's clarification that it's basement period, not only for sinkhole uses.
Okay, I think that's what we talked about, right?
I, I believe that is what he was wanting a clarification of.
Is there a motion on this?
Yeah, move on, move.
Move in a second, what, what the changes? And then this S P two-three-zero-two-eight-eight.
Yes, the last one is a change due to site fat exemption. The advocate had promised to bring a bus release exhibit for the board and the board engineer to consider before that resolution is adopted. So a copy of that exhibit is on top of your plan stack. Um, Terry just got it now as well, so there's no full engineering review on that if you're ready for one, but you may be able to offer some copies now with availability. I believe that their plan remains also subject to by testing on the, uh, feasibility of that exhibit.
So then, we approved an application, and there's supposed to be a plan that came back with it?
Correct. Um, technically, you wanted to require one of the submission requirements is a bus operation plan, and rather than the board granting that waiver, they required that provided prior to the resolution being adopted.
Okay, is Terry able to take a quick look now and see if he?
I did, Chairman. Uh, we have a plan which is going to give to us, uh, a title change used planned fourteen seventy-four East Pearl Street. Uh, dated August seventh, two thousand and eighteen, by Joseph Kajewa V eight. Uh, in looking at the plan, you have, um, a nineteen-foot deep, one hundred and fifteen-foot long area where buses can pull off, that can drop off, and then for the bus to be able to get back to East Pearl Street. Uh, I'm sure Brian will have it, but, uh, we have not seen the circulation kind of yet. Uh, however, at first glance, uh, the design appears to be conservative in nature. I presume that the applicant, if the board approves, will work with us, uh, for any necessary changes.
Yeah, at, at resolution compliance through that process. But this was so the board could see, visualize what we had said we were gonna do, which is exactly as Terry had described, that it's a bus pull-off, so they can pull onto the property, the bus can unload there, and they can pull out when there's not a bus there. It provides the availability for the car to back.
That's what was required. There was no requirement of any certain amount of buses being there.
No, no, and, and, and that's what we said. It's along the front, they have two buses, so one bus can stop at a time. They're not gonna, you remember the residents thought it was gonna take two hours going through town, so if, even if it takes half an hour going through town, they're not gonna be there at the same time.
There is, there's one, one question on that. We, we had the concrete coming out today, indentation, it's not gonna be where the bus will be unloaded. Where your sidewalk comes out to your indentation. The, the bus door will be unloading about ten feet, fifteen foot up the other end.
So, so we should have sidewalk?
So we should add sidewalk around it, so when they get off the bus, they can walk back to the sidewalk.
Yes, and the advocate would add sidewalk, and that will give the grading and everything else. Terry needs to see that it'll work.
Are there, any other comments from any board members? Being done, um, any, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Ally, you put a, you put an X that I wasn't here, but I was here.
For which part?
That was in the last meeting, right? Just want to tell.
Yeah. Was there anything when you walked down with a vote? Did you have same for any reason? We could've just been slipping the pen.
Okay, so yes, I just told you.
Okay. Actually, you made the motion on that, so I'm not sure what I was looking at.
Does there a second? There's a motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the public hearing. Um, there, there are two in the public hearing that I cannot sit on, but there's not gonna be a term. I will step off. So the first, number one and number four.
We are expecting Mr. Grunberger to affirm to me that he'd be attending today, because he was running out of early, so, um, did you say it's the first two?
No, number one and number four.
Okay, so we'll start with number two.
We'll start with number two now.
Okay, number two, S B twenty-seven B made by Gilmore. This is an amended major subdivision to adjust, uh, to the previous if you block my number this up.
Some of the latest data.
Sure.
Looking at our June twenty-three view, under submission waivers, um, we had two hundred and five for the submission clause.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. I have a problem with this, I'm gonna have to step down in this, uh, in this application.
Okay, we'll get your add.
So we're gonna, uh, that was the public for S B twenty-seven B. We just started. We do not have a quorum on. We're going to have to wait till our next board member gets here within the next handover, so we're going to continue with S B twenty-two ninety-four, Benyan Ashman Chesna. This is a change due to site fat exemption in the red house to a synagogue on the ground floor.
And I thought it was summer, so there's people. Okay, number three.
Chairman, I'm reading from our June fourteenth review. Uh, as, as Ally indicated, this is a change use application, uh, and a site fat exemption. Uh, there are waivers required, um, including, uh, San Juan by engineer, water sewer service, repurchase rule, escape the lighting, and property degrading. We recommend granting those for hearing purposes only. Uh, if the board needs any new improvements, as a condition of any approval, obviously, we would have to give us necessary evaluation.
Let's have record reflect that Mr. Grunberger has arrived.
Okay. Terry, do a.
Board grant, we recommend waivers.
Do we have a motion to go along with Terry, uh, Terry's opposition for the waivers.
Right now.
I, I, I'm sorry, Terry, I, uh, so one of the waivers they're asking for is landscape and lighting, right?
Sir, why is the site fat exemption now?
We didn't get it.
Nobody got it yet.
You don't think approved this?
No, no, what we're doing now is submission waivers, so it's.
You approve all the waivers before you have to.
Well, hang, hang on. What, what we typically do is sometimes, sometimes the advocate asks for certain waivers before we actually go to the application. I was actually just making, I was gonna make a comment to the engineer regarding the waivers. Um, I, I personally, when it comes to, when it comes to change uses in residential neighborhoods to commercial or synagogue uses, um, I'd rather hear the application first than talk about granting landscape lighting waivers, um, you know, things that maybe that original neighborhood, so. That, I mean, that's just my personal opinion, that I think when it comes to these things, let's hear the application before we grant waivers in residential neighborhoods.
And I, I, okay, and I, and I would, uh, I agree with that, and maybe in, in the future, or for your point, uh, there should not be a recommendation to, um, by the engineer for a vote.
But when it comes to change uses in residential neighborhoods, I think it's only fair to hear the application, and then we'll decide if we wanna grant what waivers. Yes, so good. We're gonna, we're gonna hear the application before the vote, I'm sorry, Chair. Before the vote, but there's always a public hearing before the vote. Yes, the public has the application.
The eyes are there. They're not there.
Terry. But let's go through the zoning, uh, section.
Okay, under, under zoning, it's like, it's an R twelve zone, places and where it is permitted uses. Uh, the existing site is non-performing with respect to combined side yard setback. Uh, combined side yard setbacks twenty-four, twenty-eight feet versus the exempt general twenty-five feet. Again, that's a pretty significant addition with the home. Uh, career properties necessary, um, twenty-four wide buffer, which are more than residential properties. Uh, you have a, a twelve point four foot buffer, um, which is proposed for the south. Uh, and finally.
And that's not pre-existing?
I think the parking is for a different use. So the board wants to, to view whether it will grant parking for proposed use within the box.
So the proposed use, because it's not residential, requires certain buffering that exists.
So, so although the structure and the buffering is not changing, because the use is changing.
Correct.
Okay. I believe that's all the, parking shows two parking spaces.
That's it?
Parking shows, according to my interpretation of the change use plan, which does that, not the engineer design. It shows two, two parking spaces.
Okay, and that's efficient, uh, because there's no buffer and?
Then the existing driveway is what they would be twenty-four still. They can already exist on the drive.
Okay, thank you.
There are no currently replacing rooms.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pepitone, we're after the applicant. Uh, I agree with any initial comments. Uh, just out of my hand to swear in, uh, Mr. Flannery.
Do you swear affirmatively before the court?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. As indicated, this is an application to change the use from an existing single-family residence to a shul. The, uh, shul will have a sanctuary of seven hundred square feet, which requires no parking for the ordinance. Uh, two parking spaces are provided. Uh, as indicated in Terry's report, uh, the use is permitted. Uh, the, uh, combined side yard setback of twenty-four point eight versus twenty-five is an existing situation, and in my opinion is de minimis. The, uh, buffer relief that we're requesting for both the shul and the, the, uh, parking is to an existing house and an existing driveway. Uh, it's, uh, the parking isn't even required, so, uh, technically, we could remove the two spaces, and then that relief wouldn't be needed, but that certainly doesn't make any sense. If the board had any recommendations, with respect to fencing, we have to think with certainty and retain any recommendations of the board with respect to that.
Would you be able to discuss the waivers requested, submission waivers?
Yes. Uh, well, the submission waivers are for planned requirements that are typically relating to building something. Uh, we're not building it here, it's out there. Uh, anybody that wants to drive by it can drive by and see it. Uh, it's a house that's been there that was approved in accordance with the, uh, flood plant. Uh, so a, as far as the, the method of refuse, it's gonna be the same thing in houses, they're gonna roll a can out to the street. As, with reference to the, uh, landscaping and, and lighting, um, they're not changing any of the landscaping and lighting. If somebody feels more landscaping or lighting is needing, we'll leave it at it. But this is a neighborhood shul, we're trying to keep it as non-intrusive as possible, and my recommendation would be to leave it as it is. Uh, the top topography and proposed grading is normally something that the engineer wants to see to make sure it's gonna grade properly, and so that everybody knows what's gonna be built. Here is there, everybody knows what's gonna be built. Uh, so my testimony would be that, uh, the waivers, if we were building something, would be something that the board, uh, should not grant unless there was an exceptional reason. But in, in this particular case, uh, there would be no reason to require something to show you what we're gonna build when, when it's already out there and built. The neighbors can see it, the board can see it, uh, the, the public in general can see it.
Now, what's the lighting like now, after?
Uh, I, I'm guessing they just have a spotlight on their house, the same as most every house.
And that's the way it's gonna make sense?
Yes, yeah, there's no, no plan to, to light it up anymore. There's no requirement for parking, so we don't have a parking lot that we would be lighting up. It's a driveway for two vehicles, uh, with a seven hundred square foot sanctuary that for the ordinance requires no parking. Right, so, uh, with respect to the relief that's requested, just so the, uh, the record is clear with the justification, the master plan of two thousand and seventeen, division statement says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart road planning principles. And it certainly, my testimony that does this, it's an inherently beneficial use, it's a needed use in the neighborhood, and, and it, it makes sense and fits in. It's a neighborhood shul that we fit in nicely. The municipal land use law under the purposes of the Act NDA eighteen forty-one fifty-five E two, A, encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of all land in the state, in a manner which will promote health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and this will certainly promote the general welfare.
As far as the garage, um, it says it doesn't have to remain, is that gonna become part of the shul?
That, that'll be there as storage. Uh, I doubt they have very much to store there, but, uh...
So that's not gonna become part of the?
No.
Okay.
The driveway that Sean planned, the taxi driveway, that's an existing driveway?
It's an existing driveway.
How many, um, how many congresses, uh, pray there?
Approximately thirty families.
Thirty families? And it's a, every baseball, right? It's not just a weekend's?
Chauvin.
Chauvin?
Chauvin. But that's not your question. We're writing out the uses right now, don't we? As, uh, that's not the request. That's, um, over the last year, it's been sufficient company.
No, the advocate's not saying that this is only gonna be a Chauvin.
Correct, currently, it's only being used.
So this is gonna be a weekend, oh, seven days?
As the development. But right now, the use is, is.
Okay, which one is the flag?
Yeah, I mean, if it would be just Chauvin, it wouldn't need parking.
The whole sanctuary, you said, on just like, you know, very large. Is there a baseball? No.
Any other questions from the board members? Should we open to the public first? Let's open it to the public. Anyone from the public, want to be here? Just come forward. State your name for the record and get sworn and invited attorney, please.
Who shall I address? My question, sir. The board?
Be to the board.
Sir, uh, please state your name.
I will. My name is Wayne A. Stewart, Junior. I live at eleven forty-five Tiffany Lane. Okay?
Sir, please raise your hand. Do you swear affirm affirmatively before the board that the whole trick is not about the chair?
I'm sorry. That's a yes, sir.
Okay, just, please proceed.
Um, I have about three or four questions, if you don't mind. First question is, when did the planning board become a substitute for the board of adjustment in granting use variances?
They did not.
Did that happen? Oh, it didn't?
They did not.
Okay. And you're hearing the use family?
No, this is a permitted use in the zone.
This is a permitted use in the zone. Okay, says change of use.
It's a change from one permitted use to another permitted use.
Okay. That's the first question. The second question is, did this board approve the shul on the northeast corner of Tiffany and Chesna? Which was approved for twenty parking spaces for a hundred cars? Every morning, it's a disaster. You're gonna take and put in a shul on McKensy with no parking? I assume no congregants. How are they gonna get there? Okay? Now, if it's only open on shovels, that means they walk. Otherwise, trust me, and I swear, they drive. And there's no parking. Okay, that's the first thing. I was always under the impression that the approval process was granted based on an application that was made, okay, and then construction would be started. Doesn't appear that this is happening. It appears that they're finished with all of their construction. I didn't hear a waiver for an eighteen-foot-high chain link fence. Is it in the application?
There's no, uh, request for an eighteen-foot-high chain link fence.
I mean, is that normal use in a residential?
Nor is any approved.
Nor is any approved?
Nor.
Not on the plan, either.
It's not on the plan. Well, something magically grew out there. Eighteen-foot high in the air, okay, and it's got some green shit around it, you know, plastic, it's taken covered up. How about a pool? Did anybody approve a pool? Is there a pool on it?
There is no pool on the, uh, plan.
Okay.
Is it a, a bumper and pool?
And it's the underground pool. The guy was in there with a backhoe. I'm sure he wasn't thinking digging up garden. Now, you guys are approving this on this application, and this stuff already exists. It didn't exist as a single-family home.
So the pool is a, is a new addition that was put in of it?
Yeah, the guy was back dealing with backhoe.
Chairman, permits, I'm sorry, to interrupt, just trying to report it to me. Permits may or may not have been issued by the zoning officer or the building department for the existing residential house under that use such as a pool or fence that will be jurisdiction afterward, while this is a residential use. Once it's changed to a non-residential, then it would be subject to site fat requirements like any other, you know, commercial.
So would the site files submitted not be required to show everything that's on the site?
I don't know how current the plans are, how you, who is, they, they should show current information, yes.
That's part of the reason why we have to provide us, and we'll have to ask the applicant, is there a, is there?
Who inspected the site?
Mr. Flannery or Mr. Pep, is there a pool on the premises?
Yes, there's a pool on the grounds.
Is there a reason?
I'm assuming the pool, uh, they went to the building department and got permitted for the pool.
Is it shown on the, on the plan?
I understand.
It is not shown on the plan.
Why is it not shown on the plan?
Uh, the intent of this application was to change the house to a shul, so what's in the backyard really doesn't impact that, certainly if the board.
It definitely impacts it, because you have kids running around in a shul, and then you have a pool on the ground. That'd be some sort of fencing somewhere.
But the neighbor did testify there's an eighteen-foot-high chain link fence around it, which, again, I would assume was done with permits, and likely you can't get a permit for eighteen-foot-high chain link fence in as far as what.
So the dispensary around the pool?
Yes.
Should be noted on the plan.
Pool was put in after the plan, and this is it. So we're probably gonna have to counter, the plan's made, uh, and we've walked through, we walked through, it's in page two, made, uh, May seventeen. 17th, rated, and we called it the pool's ring, and it did happen.
Okay, um, hold on. Is, uh...
When was the permit issued?
Hold on one minute, please. Is there a, I'm just trying to look at the application. Is a current survey required for the application?
They have an app, they have a survey that was submitted February 20th.
So that's part, is the board comfortable going forward with this application, or do you want to see an amended application with a current survey showing the conditions as is? That's a pretty fundamental aspect of an application, supposed to have a current survey.
I think general rule about the series for years for a survey in Lincoln is one, it's one.
Well, but if there's a material change, you know, that they do. So...
I think also, just as a practice of the board, that when we receive a survey that's old, maybe we should actually have no change.
Well, it's...
Mr. Jackson, we have no objection at this point. We want to carry the, carry thirty days or the next few days, and then we'll get a survey done, and the next should be appealed. We'll probably get a survey done very quickly. From the board, we have no objection before seeing that. I would get...
I just have a question, though. Is a, I can understand why a residential home would want to have a pool, but is a pool a normal accessory for a shul?
Well, it's an interesting story that I just found out.
Hey, I have a question.
Okay. The owner of the property, this lot, also owns the lot in the back. So this was put in on a residential property for residential use. The fence opens up to the lot on the other street, so the shul will not be using the pool. The owner of the property will be using it.
Well, that creates an effectively subdivision.
No, it's not a subdivision because the property still belongs, it's two lots, it's still two lots.
That's a little hard to navigate, though. You have the use of a shul that's kind of merged over into the use of the residential lot and your sharing facilities. That's a little different than just a straight-up... If you're actually not seeking the change of use to a shul, you're seeking it to have a accessory of a pool as well for the use and benefit of an adjoining lot, which is kind of, maybe the gentleman was right, maybe that is a D variance. I don't know. I can't get my head around it.
Well, that's one question. The other question, the gentleman referenced, rather than all fits. Can we have information on that?
Yeah, what, is that 18 feet as well as 10 feet?
That's our position. We're saying we're going to survey the property, we're going to get his answers. Okay, that, and you want to find out with the, I'm not, gentlemen, the meeting. However, it is, we're going to get the permits, I wish to hide it by the outside. Yes, some of us are guessing, we're going on details in the back of the board.
Okay, so after you have a word, if it's more than six feet, require his own.
In the late order access, you have 18-foot high fence on the property line for every five feet below the property line, you have a different...
So depending on the location, what that will be?
Yes.
I saw 18-foot-high fence once on the property, or is it a time of backstop?
That's typically, that's a backstop. Okay, Ally, what would you like to discuss with them?
Um, the next meeting, the 21st, we need to survey to the time of August. So you want to go to September 4th?
September 4th.
September 4th, and then whatever revised documents you're getting in, you need to be at least ten days.
All right. What do you think, when you revise documents, other than...
The certain...
...surrendering?
You're not going to update, take these plans to show what the survey...
We will have them in the sun.
Okay, September 4th, and Terry, you know, where do we go?
Just, I just want to say on September 4th, just for the benefit of the people that are here, we have, we have that big application.
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanted to keep that one separate, right?
Well, I don't know if we want to keep it separate, but that's going to be, it's going to be a long one, so...
There is one very large application. We should refer to September 20th, 20th?
Is that the 20th or the 4th?
The September 4th is the long one for Mr. Hertzog, September 20th is nothing.
Yeah, I checked us. This is just for the 4th, I'll be here, moving around, we only heard, I checked.
Perfect. I just, I just want to tell, for the benefit of the people here, we'll put it on the 4th, but we have one large application for that, which may take a couple hours. I just want to put it out there.
That's not fair to sit there for hours.
Well, I...
Yeah, very much.
Well, I mean, in all fairness, there are many applications that have, that have members of the public or neighbors that come out, and many times, depending on how the schedule is, you have to wait. It's just how it is sometimes. I want to throw that out there, just so you know. And it all goes according to the schedule.
Is there a motion to move this?
And if you come to the next meeting, you may have to wait for hours also.
Excuse me. I'm not done.
I believe there are a bunch of applications for you. Sir, on the basis that the applicant is an amended application, we're going to stop you from proceeding now because we don't want to do it again. You might have additional comments based on what they're submitting.
I don't disagree, okay, with what you want to do. What I disagree with is putting in this shul with all these changes, okay, before the approval of the board.
Well, that's a difference.
That's, that's what I object to.
This board is not a recog, recognition...
Then you shouldn't have heard the application.
That's an enforcement issue. You can take that up with the office or...
If you're, if this board is not ready to take, and here we use variants, if they don't do it normally, it's for the Board of Adjustment to do, then you shouldn't be taken and hearing it. And he should have, he should have taken and had all of his permits before the approvals.
Sir, there's...
Or do you take and do it back-to-back? You allow them to take and build and change, and then you approve it. Is that how that works?
There's a few separate issues. Firstly, we're happy that you brought these matters to our attention, which we would have never known. There's only two ways we would have known about it. If we lived next door, or it was on the plan, and none of us had either. So the construction department issues all the permits that you referred to. We're not the construction department. We have nothing to do with that. So we're happy that you brought that to our attention. And the second issue is that this is not a use variance. This is an allowed use within the zone. So there's no way we would have known about the improvements unless you said something, which we're happy you did. That's why we said, okay, let's just stop this right now, let them come back. And the second issue is that this is not a use variance.
All of these variances should have had the permits available before he come to the planning board for an approval.
Sir, I'm going to have to stop you.
And you're right. That's, that's going into a major subdivision because you're joining two lots.
Sir, we do not know whether that's accurate or inaccurate, and it doesn't matter to this board. They view the application based on what's before them and the information.
I want to be noticed in the next hearing.
If there were permits issued or not, this board is not enforcement agents. So you are noticed to the next hearing. What's the next hearing date?
September 4th.
Is the board satisfied with that?
Yes.
Is everybody in favor of moving this matter to September 4th?
Is the planning board going to hear the use variance?
All those in favor of this being...
If it's not a use variance, we're going to hear the application time, time, if the time board says September 4th means.
It says...
It's not a use variance.
I'm not confused.
All right, Mr. Reddick, we should move on to the next case.
Do we have a motion to move this report?
I will. I'll make that announcement. I just want to know if the board is all in favor of...
I want to be noticed.
...September 4th.
But they're being hearing.
You're being noticed now.
I'll move a motion to move it to September 4th.
September 4th.
There's a motion, is there a second to move the case to September 4th?
This is going to be on the agenda for September 4th.
There's a second and a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Members of the public being advised, SB 2017, SB 2294AA, Minion, Michigan, Chestnut, have been adjourned. We'll be here on September 4th, 2018, 6 o'clock, this meeting hall. We know for good notice, at that time, you may be, and at that time, you can bring attorney, cross-exam, witness, provide testimony, whatever.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to, yes?
I think we want to move this, SB 2994AA on September 4th.
Yes.
Yes.
We have it on, same time, same time.
Yes. Yes.
And, sorry, I can't read the name.
We're going to go back to number one now on the, on the public hearing agenda. Throw the gabble to John.
This is application, SB 2318, congregation Malos Hatora. It's a minor subdivision, it creates six lots from five, located between Salem Street and Gates Avenue.
Five, five and five.
Oh, okay, thank you. So...
Yeah, who's chairing?
No, this is Frank.
Oh, this is Frank, I'm sorry.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes. Might I summarize zoning variances that were requested for lot width for lots 36.11 to 46.11? Design waivers are requested from, for being right away, Gates Avenue, and that's it. We all have that.
Sure will. Good evening. How are you, Mr. Franklin? Even if your name text says you're Dave Garfield.
I'm...
Right. Your name takes her backwards.
I changed my name, but I got this.
After all these years, you changed your name, huh? All right. Good evening. Mary Morinstine, on behalf of the applicant, congregation Malos Hatora. I'm going to assume that on this one as well, the board wants to hear the design waivers after we start the application, correct, Mr. Flansbrough?
You have to ask Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Franklin, well, you're the one who raised it on the last, on the last application. I think it makes sense, actually.
The last one was the change of use in the residential neighborhood.
Mine makes sense, it may make sense anyway, because when we go through the application, we'll explain, we'll explain what the story is with those roads. So unless the board has a problem with it, I think it makes more sense to just address the design waivers.
Just want to say here, the design waivers, we just straightened that out, and the last instance was where it was required to...
Okay, actually, you're correct. Thank you. Sorry, Ally.
That's okay.
Okay. Mary Morinstine, on behalf of the applicant, congregation Malos Hatora. We are here this evening for an application for a minor subdivision. This tract was five lots, it will be five lots. So basically, you could look at it as a lot realignment. What we had before was three very deep lots that fronted on Salem Street and two lots behind that, which now have frontage on the newly created Gates Avenue and Clinton Avenue. Gates Avenue and Clinton Avenue will be created as part of a recently approved subdivision at the zoning board, hence the request not to improve those streets now because they are part of an approved zoning board application, and they will be improved when that, when that, when that application is built. The result of this application will be four lots with frontage on Salem Street that are each 75 feet wide by 266.67 feet deep. These lots meet the required lot area for the R20 zone, but require variance relief for the lot widths of 75 feet where 100 feet is required in the zone. We will provide testimony to justify the granting of those variances. In addition, the rest of the property, so that's the rear of the property, will be consolidated into one new lot to be known as Lot 31.01, with frontage on Gates and Clinton Avenues. The applicant will return to the zoning board to further develop this tract in accordance with their earlier approval in that area. And that's the reason that it's just being consolidated at this point into one big lot. The property contains many environmental constraints, which I'm going to let Graham, our engineer, explain at length, but I would like to make the request, this is really a minor subdivision. A minor subdivision requires that it be perfected within 190 days in the subdivision map filed, within that timeframe. Being that we are going to be required to get approvals from the DEP, who doesn't tend to make decisions within 190 days, it's virtually impossible for this subdivision to be filed within 190 days. So I'd like to make a request at this time, instead of coming back in front of this board six months from now to ask for an extension, to ask that this approval be granted for a lengthier period of time to account for the fact that we are going to need to get those outside agency approvals from the Department of Environmental Protection.
Is that, that's a little unusual to ask for an extension because you can't get it done in time and hasn't happened?
Agreed. It's unusual. I don't think, I don't think there's anything that precludes us from doing it, though.
I don't think we've ever done it that before, have we?
Just come back.
Every, like, everyone, yes.
Yeah, then that's going to become a new thing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would rather just, you know, and board is never unreasonably compelled in extension. You can't get improvement...
Okay. I mean, we know we're going to be back on this one. It's pretty much impossible.
Yeah, but I think you're right. Because then every time, it's like, well, we're not sure if we're going to get it in six months, or what's just going to be... Rather, just come back. This way, it just matters to you. All right.
Okay, so be it. If I can ask to have Graham McFarlane sworn.
McFarlane, please raise your right hand. Hands, please, for a front testimony we'll give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. For the record, Graham McFarlane, the first one here, question player with...
I trust you're accepting his credentials? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're good?
Yes.
Okay. Graham, if you can go ahead and describe the application, and particularly, what's give the justification for the variance, for the lot width?
Yes, as you indicated, as that line in, in, in your letter, the application currently consists of five, five existing lots, hold of subdivided property in five lots, so five lots and five lots. Of course, given the classification as a minor subdivision here in accordance with the board's... I feel that it's, first of all, they were referred to an aerial display. I marked that A1, aerial display, errors today, things were taken in October 2017. That shows the subject property's outline, the yellow, shows the coverage of the, of the lots on Salem Street, and also shows the adjoining Stanford Hill project that came that show that was built over the last, last, last couple of years. A2 is the minor subdivision plan that was submitted as part of the, of the application package. A2 shows our full subdivided parcel in, in five lots. Four lots will front on Salem Street. The other lot, move up 31.01 in the back portion, will have frontage on, on, on improved Gates Ave, and Clinton Ave, as Mary described. We're seeking waiver from not having to improve Gates Ave and Clinton Ave as part of this application, since that parcel is actually part of a, part of the zoning board application. So under that zoning board application, this, Golders Ring Road is the street that serves the Stanford Hill project, which was formerly Gates Ave, is renamed to Golders Ring Road. Golders Ring Road will be decided to provide for some housing within that Lot 31. So that's why we're seeking the waiver of improvement, putting that at eight, that would make any, any sense to improve them as part of this application. Because we're not proposing any improvement on that Lot 31.01 here from here for the, for the fire board.
Perhaps if you don't get the zoning board, yeah.
Got it.
You got it, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I missed that one. He said, say, zoning board?
No, it's true.
Okay.
So there are, again, there are, there are four lots proposed on Salem Street. We are asking for variance for minimal lot width. I believe there are several, several points which the board should consider reevaluating those variances or requests. One is that our proposal maintains the minimum lot size, so lots over 20,000 square feet is system with your 20 zone, zones. So that does maintain lot size and preserve population density as anticipated by the master plan and anticipated by the zoning that is affected. From an environmental perspective, this application approved would allow us to upgrade septic systems in the vicinity. There are two existing homes which are on old, old system that are not in accordance with current regulations. Uh, to improve, we would build four, four new homes in accordance with septic systems in accordance with current regulations that would improve water quality. Uh, this application does have some wire constraints associated with the property, is, uh, this cross by a stream corridor, with that stream corridor, we, uh, we have a parion buffer of fifty feet, we have a wetland buff, wetlands and wetland buffer, and we also have a flood hazard area. We have obtained approval, uh, from the DEP confirmation for the letter of proof taken for wetlands and a wetland buffer. We have obtained confirmation of a parion buffer with fifty feet, and we have also obtained, uh, flood hazard area permit, flood hazard area verification from the DEP, which confirms the line as shown on our plan. So the, so the, um, the portions of the site that are restricted from the government are, are consistently what's shown on our plan, which still allows the element of four lots as proposed on Salem Street. Uh, the four homes would, uh, would be required to obtain permits from the DEP for flood hazard area compliance, because there may be some disturbance within the flood hazard area regulated by the DEP, and the plan we have proposed would satisfy the requirements of the DEP related to flood hazard area. Uh, I believe this application would contribute to the well-being of persons by upgrading the local housing stock, of course, a lack of rental location, for which there is a demand for, for housing stock, and upgrading the housing stock to current conditions, and within accordance with our current parts, is effective to the municipality. And these lots, as I mentioned, are similar to those in the neighborhood, it creates harmonious lot sizes, that's also a policy, to, to the neighborhood, satisfies and advances the purposes of the land. Now, within this section of the municipality, um, lots spanning by si, by Salem Street and hands around to Pine Street, there are at least a hundred and fifty lots in that area, which are, uh, less than a hundred foot lot width that are required by, by the laws. Uh, these lots are proposed, are consistent with the development pattern in the area, and again, will maintain the minimum lot size, so I, I believe they are consistent with the, uh, the goal of the master plan. Uh, as to the technical comments from Terry's review letter, we don't take exception to any of his comments, who agree to, uh, to comply with those and work through, uh, work through those with him. So that summarizes my initial testimony.
Graham McFarlane, the, uh, I'm sorry, the exhibits that you have up there, they all have a moment, so then, I don't think that aerial is in market yet.
Uh, the aerial I identified as A1, that is, that's submitted. Uh, the minor subdivision plan I did, Graham, to A2, that was submitted to the board's part of that.
Did they send the board secretary at PDS in A1?
Certainly.
Oh, is it, uh, on that, uh?
Yes.
Any board members have any questions?
Will you show me where the, um, five lots exist here?
Well, five lots exist, now, if you just need to do is look at the aerial, they're, they're not wanting to be yellow. So there are lots forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, that are fronted on Salem, and then there are lots thirty-one and thirty-two, which are behind those lot continuaries, they have frontage on a portion of Gates Ave, which is, uh, probably, uh, before.
You're combining those two?
We're combining, uh, if you look at the subdivision, uh, or P2, uh, we're supplementing all Salem Street, three, four lots, so four new lots of two hundred and sixty-six feet deep. The remainder of the parcel would be part of, if one is the border lot. I'll show you, uh, show you A3. A3 is a map, uh, it's, it's a, Golders Ring Road development plan, this is the plan, uh, that's before the zoning board, before, this is, this is, this is the application that's coming before the zoning board. This shows outline in blue, we'll, Lot 31, one zero one, and the other four lots, plus, on Salem Street, would be required.
And, and, what are you doing on these four lots, single family?
Uh, these four lots on Salem Street would be single family home, no other relief requested, we perform two front yard inside our, our, our set back requirement. The only difference for us is on the lot.
What are, what are the width sizes of all the lots adjacent to these on Salem?
The adjacent lots on Salem are under G1. The adjacent, the adjacent lots satisfy the, satisfy the zoning.
Is it just the adjacent, are there any lots on Salem that are at seventy-five?
On Salem, I don't think there are any lots on Salem that are at seventy-five, but there are, there are many lots in the vicinity that are below the hundred foot, um, you know, lot, lot size requirement. And, and really, the, the important fact, um, is that we maintain the lot size requirement. What zoning is established, you know, zoning is really done in a, in a global perspective, uh, where it deals with lot sizes and densities, and this application, we're not proposing any change to density, we're still proposing four lots, twenty thousand square feet, so as to, uh, intensity of development or maintaining character of neighborhood, this plan is consistent for both of those.
Any more questions? Over to the public. Anyone in the public wish to speak on this application? Over to the public? John, what's your question?
Most of the motion?
Yes, the motion.
I'll, I'll move a motion to, um, to approve the application.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application, we have a second. Be no second, do we have another motion?
We'll all second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
No.
Mr. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Flansbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Flanberg, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
It's three and two, so the motion approved passes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Flanberg is stepping back to the chair, um, while we're on his way, actually, we've got two applications presented, the agenda that I forgot to mention, and the fourth. One is listed on the agenda in our chat, is application SB 2338 for clear view equity. Um, I actually was not ready to schedule this on this agenda, simply because of the volume you have tonight, but the applicant, through his communication, had noticed first tonight, so I told them that we would announce the carry for our next meeting on August 21st, and that they, they don't have to be noticed, and the board won't have questions. Um, the second is that we're carrying the amendment 2293 for NESA, NESA, value, Yak L. Lakewood. That application wasn't prepared to go forward, the notice even currently referenced lot number one point zero one five instead of lot one, so they do need to re-notice. But for anyone who's here that may be interested in application SB 2293, be advised that they are being scheduled for our next meeting, which is August 21st.
Do we, do we amend this, uh, to, number nine and number one?
SB 2293. The 2293 will be noticing with the correct lot number, but SB 2338, they actually announced the carry so that they don't have to re-schedule.
So, do we have a motion to move SB 2338?
Move. Second.
All in favor?
I, I. Members of the public, if you find that application SB 2338 for clear view equity has been tabled, and is scheduled to carry through August 21st, 2018, 6:00 p.m. meeting, this meeting hall, no further notice to be provided.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and let's move on to number two in the public carry now, um, SB 27.
SB 27 EB, a deal home for back that way, with the plan comment.
The record, I'm set down.
Okay, so we can step down. This is an amended subdivision to adjust the lot number three, isn't it?
Um, Terry, if you would please, if I would, if I would agree from where he's pointing for new chairment, under submission waivers, we approve a submission for county planning board and more architectural rendering, as indicated in all of the due, um, the application was originally approved by the county, um, and the final flat files, and that they are aware, um, if, if the board raises the amendment, we all have to file, the final plan will be counted, therefore, we support their rendering, uh, then architecturals, uh, those generalized elevations, and floor plans.
And the reasons why we're recommending that?
We're going to further the option, we're going to architecturals. Submission waiver for architecturals.
I believe the site is under construction and not to have models.
Correct, that, that is correct.
And we have models selected, that's our.
This is a second phase, as a document.
And, uh, changes.
No, no, no. Do we have a motion to go along with submission waiver? The lines are up.
I guess there, there is no motion.
You can leave it for the end.
You're leaving, it's again, the, the single family houses, they're right behind.
Okay, all right. And reviewing our zoning, um, our original comments, one or two under zoning have been addressed, going on to page four, um, there are variances that are, are, are required with respect, uh, to front yard setback, um, and, uh, also the body yard setback on several of the lots.
Okay, new variances?
I could address that, if, yeah, if you'd like. Like, uh, Adam Faber, term of the applicant, um, we had them modify based upon the DEP, um, some modifications, we're actually reducing it by one lot, so, a, as, uh, Terry indicated, there originally were some dipage, and we made them corrected for the right lot size, and there are a few, some of these variances had previously been approved, uh, we're just now shifting some lines around and taking a lot out, um, so to say, they're exact, uh, are they new variances, I, I have to look exactly at the old plan, but it's one less lot, so, like, therefore, um, I think some, a side yard setback, uh, a combined side yard setback, it's variance, and they're, they're small, uh, minor variance.
Why don't we have an engineer?
Yes, so, is Terry done, has he done something?
Yes.
At this time, I can swear in, uh, Mr. Flanery?
Do you swear or affirm, uh, that the testimony you give, uh, to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flanery, Daxx New Jersey license, special engineer, professional planner. Uh, as indicated in Terry's report, we're here for a reduction of one lot, I have tree rendering, A1 is the, uh, 2016 approved subdivision plan, uh, and I highlighted the cul-de-sac with the changes occurring, as you can see, the C1 buffer line is moving through the plant, and this cul-de-sac has four lots. A2, uh, is what we're asking for this season, same cul-de-sac, but pulled back, and three lots, and so, four. A3 is the same thing as A2, only I highlighted in blue where the other lot was, and you can see the change. It is, uh, less lots, uh, and, and less lots recording variance. Uh, looking at Terry's report, uh, in number one, he indicates the previous tool, and he does indicate the number of variance in regard to minimum lot area has been reduced. Uh, the, uh, then he goes into the lot width variances, and, and they're, uh, seventy-three point seven, one seventy-three point, and, and, and they're decimal point changes, but virtually the same thing. Uh, and then, on page four, he indicates the front setback, uh, of 2221 versus 30, uh, which is for the corner lot, and, and the, uh, the variance we were, we're here, uh, this one lot, the front setback is decided out. Uh, uh, so, uh, you know, it's, it's my testimony that the variance, it was reduced from what was originally approved, uh, the number of lots is reduced from what was originally approved. The justification is the variance, the, the typical C2 variances, uh, when they were approved before, I told you about the old master plan now, which is that we have the 2017 master plan, which, which certainly indicates the same housing density, uh, on page three of that, it concludes with, uh, based on the information, it's important that Lakewood plans residential rail and house from, uh, Lakewood. That's why it was approved in the first place, and now we're, we're asking for less, uh, to accommodate the, uh, C1 buffer that's been proposed. The vision statement in that same master plan, not encouraged, uh, growth of development in appropriate locations, and, and board found this was an appropriate location for all the lots. Uh, and the prior approval, we're actually for one less at this time. The municipal land use law encouraged, NDA C41, eighty-five, C2, A encouraged this lot to guide the appropriate use and development of all land in the state, in a manner of legal, public health, safety, moral, and welfare, and, and that this does it, C2 variances, we show that it relates to a specific piece of property, and, and this is very specific, and we had one approval, the, uh, definition of where the C1 buffer line is was questioned and changed, and based on that, uh, we lose the lot, the purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced, which is what I, I just discussed, the variance is going to be granted without any substantial, uh, desert to public goods, the variance will reduce, certainly, that is eight, uh, the variances will not carry the intent and purpose of the zone, land, zone ordinance, and, and, we've got one last lot, so certainly, and in general, the benefits that way are generated, and that's, that's my testimony. Going through Terry's report with respect to, uh, any of the other items, we will certainly satisfy, uh, any of the requirements, Mr. Board, I'd say.
And, so, are there any other variances that we, besides these lots that we modified, here and there?
Uh, the entire rest of the development stays the same. It's just this cul-de-sac that changes, that is still not here, we had four, the, uh, the one on the corner, the three little ones, now we have the one on the corner, and, uh, two ways.
Any questions, any board members?
Um, it's quite, C1, Bob, I have to mention.
C1 is a category one, there's a, a streaming wood there, somewhere that has a three hundred foot buffer associated with it, uh, the, the applicant, uh, went to the DEP, and the DEP felt that the, the three hundred foot buffer comes out to this area, and these were approved prior to, uh, that stream being designated as category one, were allowed to stay, these were done, uh, after it was designated as category one, needed to get a permit, uh, to comply with, uh, development of the category one buffer, and prior to getting a permit, was reduced to a four.
Any other questions? Anyone want to tell a question here on the table? Please state your name for the record.
Uh, please state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Emily.
And, uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
On judgment, because you have an application from Evans Homes to the final major sub. On the plan, the final major sub, there's a water and sewer pipe, main expansion to Crescent Avenue, block one ninety, block one twenty-nine, uh, why do you think of that, please? This is what I'm talking about, this expansion for water and sewer line, going through Crescent Avenue, but in order to get to Crescent Avenue, they have to go through my lot, my lane, and there is a, this is where all the water is, and the, uh, three hundred foot buffer there, so. I have some things here that show that.
May I, may I take a copy of that and just?
I, I need it for them, I have one, I'll give you it.
So they, what, they put it on, can I just take a picture of it?
Yes.
Or is that the same as what you're naming?
No.
Okay.
This shows the area, this is it right here, and it shows, um, going right through. And that paperwork there is where the town is denying them to do anything. There it is. Here's one of the plates. Now, when I put this thing down, there's a red line here that is right in the area where the cavern field, uh, streams, and they're denying any building in there, and this is where they want to put that pipe for water and sewer, right through here, and they have to go through my property, and for it to do that. Now, lot one ninety, lot one twenty-nine, is in a half big area, it's contaminated, and I underline contaminated, it's a wetland slot in the flood hazard zone, the parion zone, the C1 avenue field range, green, which requires a three hundred foot buffer, runs through this property, for two years, and costs over ten thousand dollars. I was admitted, they laid with any weight, because they wanted to construct a water and sewer pipe through this contaminated property. After much stress and aggravation, justice prevailed. The NPA dismissed the case with prejudice. I don't believe in that. I don't believe that. On the plan now, for the final sewer and major subdivision, is the water and sewer, oh, I read that one. Alas, Adville filed a new application. After this was dismissed, and with prejudice, so they can't start it all over again, Adville went and gave a new application with the DEP for the same construction of a water and sewer pipe through my contaminated property. In his application, he didn't say it was through the same property that the case was dismissed for. You ask why would anyone in their right mind put a water and sewer pipe through contaminated property to kill off Lori Lee, which is me? And what they want to do, if contamination is found, and I was told last week that they know contamination is there, then they can, they can make me remediate it for millions of dollars, which I don't have, and then they can put liens on all my properties and end my life. I spoke to Brian Flannery, and he gave another route for this water and sewer pipe, which doesn't go across my property. I want to give you one. And there's another route, and then there's ten other, seven other ways that they can put that pipe. And I have to go through my property.
This was drawn by Brian Flannery?
What?
This is going to be by Brian Flannery?
This one. Here. This is paperwork, and this is what he gave the both, the ultimate rule. And here's seven other ways. I have an engineer's report, which gives seven different connections for this pipe, which doesn't go through my property, and I gave you that. I have a letter from the, alright. So now, Adville sent another application, which I'm going to give you, and then the DEP gave an answer to their application. And on the DEP's answer, it says, "The application form must be signed by the owner of all the properties that the directional drilling route will pass through." In other words, they cannot get a permit, they cannot drill anything, they cannot do anything unless they get my written permission. That is my property, they cannot go through it, and I will never, never give an easement with any of you, so that you could have remedial millions of dollars expenses for contamination?
We understand that you do not want to go through your property.
What?
We understand you do not want to go through your property.
Say this?
We understand you do not want this going through your property.
So then I need, I'm not against them getting their, what they want tonight. But I want this extension taken off the plan. It has no right to be on the plan, because he doesn't have a permit for it, and if I don't sign, to allow him to go through my property.
It doesn't sound like they're going to be able to get anything done without you signing. So I just have to turn to the engineer. Yes, engineer, what is his plans? So Brian, what's your plans?
Well, as Ms. Leeds indicates, you can't go through somebody's property. This is America. She owns the property, you can't go through. The applicant cannot get a permit or go through her property without her permission. The, this is an outside agency approval. She keeps saying water and sewer. I think she's a little nervous. It's only for a water line. The NUA has said they want this applicant to loop the water line as an improvement for their system. And she had, as she indicated, a very good engineer, one that I'm very comfortable with, come up with different layouts on how that can be accomplished. So this applicant can do that without going through her property, which really isn't part of this application. So if Ms. Leeds needs an assurance tonight that the water main is not going to go through her property without getting permission to do that, I can certainly represent that because that's the law. I don't know how it's going to go tonight. This application is for one less unit, and that's not in the area where this is. So the applicant is asking for that one less unit. They will talk with the NUA, who wants this interconnection. It's not needed. The water is there, they're already connected up to water, there's houses on water, so it's not needed. It's just a benefit that the applicant was trying to do. The applicant originally was going through Ms. Leeds' property, and as she indicates, it was contentious, and they withdrew that. They didn't draw where that's going to go, would certainly show Terry, I think he already has a plan showing how it can go without going through there. So our position is, it's an outside agency approval. We'd like the approval subject to the outside agency approval.
Is that mine?
Well, at this point, we don't have another design to throw on there. We haven't met with the NUA as far as going another design. So we don't have another design to show at this point. But since it's an outside agency approval, it's not needed as part of this application. This application is for one less unit.
Understood.
Right, and just to comment on that outside agency approval status, it wasn't within the purview of the board for today's purposes?
I mean, that plan cannot be approved with that pipe going that way, because they can do it, and say it's on their plan, and they have the right to do it, and I am not agreeable to this plan being approved with that pipe going up there.
Ms. Leeds, this board is not approving that pipe to go there. This board is approving a subdivision, a revised subdivision of the property, and however they get, they have to work that out.
No, but you're approving that plan, and that plan shows a pipe going up, and that's what I'm not going to, I'm not happy with that.
Okay, it's, it's subject to, I guess, you signing off on it, right?
No, I, Lakewood can do a lot of different things. They're very hazy, and I'm not going to be approving a plan with that pipe going up. I will have to go to court and sue everybody on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'll file the complaint, if you don't take that pipe off that plan.
Ma'am, thank you for your comments. The board understands what you're saying, I think. You know, we don't want to get argumentative.
Okay. Is there anything else, any other concern, Ms. Leeds, you have?
No, my only concern is that a plan cannot be approved with a pipe going over my property when they don't have permits for it. Even though it's not the issue tonight, it's the whole plan that's being approved. And the whole plan shows a pipe going through my property.
Understood. Thank you. Is anyone else that wants to use this person? State your name.
Ashy Bach.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you give to the board tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah. Okay, my question is, I have two questions. They keep on SD 2070, it's already been roughly three already, but we keep making little variances, and I'm trying to figure out what exactly is the master plan on that other lot, which you have over there in the corner, which is, there's no plan. What's the lot called? This lot right here. There is no plan, yeah. They tried to build a commercial shopping center there, but they backed out off the other map. I guess it could have led to a drone or something to the other property. Mr. Flannery's goodwill.
They went to the zoning board for use variance. The zoning board, I don't remember whether it got denied, or it was just blatantly clear, they're not going to get a use variance, so it's a large lot in a residential zone at this point. And that's all it should be used for, is residential, or another, maybe it's residential zone.
Okay. They said over there then that it is ample recreation on 2070. I'm trying to figure out where that open space is. I was here, but I'm reading a couple, I think a year ago, and they were providing a twenty thousand, a sixty thousand square lot of four instead of three. And they said if you make it R15, or fifteen thousand each, then you have to get a fifteen thousand open space area. This lot we hear has, I don't know, twenty-five to thirty-five houses. They touched up every single property, and yet, there's no twenty-five hundred, thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet per house that it should be giving open space. So I'm trying to figure out where that open space is. And then the third thing they asked them, and how many basement apartments? Now, Mr. Flannery said they only asked for the ordinance and allowance, which is one. If you look at their marketing, I don't have the marketing on me, but look at the marketing, what Adville Homes is offering, they're actually offering for an extra ten thousand, twenty thousand, they'll build you a second apartment in the basement. So we see here, the point is that we see three times, at least once, that they had kept to their thing. I don't know what else they kind of doing. I don't know what they would change from four to three. I still don't see where the open area is. You know where the open area is?
Yeah.
Where is that open area?
Well, the open area you're referring to is with respect to the initial application, and it's the passive recreation area on the back of the property.
How much worth is it then? And is there access to everybody? And we're not talking about the warranty, because those are one of the very dangers, because they can be starting through it.
Well, active, passive recreation is wood. It's something else. It's open to everybody. It's, the township owns it, and it's open there.
The township owns it, it's in all.
The township owns it. It's a JCP and L Leasman, where the particular, where their property is, the rest of it, it's not all in the, in the east, the rest of it, the township owns, and it's open for anybody that wants to...
So you comply with ordinance, five percent open?
Yes.
And not comply with ordinance?
Yeah. And this application, again, is just, we're three and I agree, there were four, now we're only going to have three, so the lots are bigger. The open space is all related to the prior application, and it's all there.
How much is that open space? Is it going to lie on the ground?
The open space complies with the ordinance. I don't have the number, because I didn't prepare for testifying on the prior application. I compared on what's being requested to be changed, which is changing from four lots to three lots.
I understand, but it's a big application, and then tomorrow you'll say, oh, well, that one lot will go through.
The applicant didn't come back here today because he'd rather build three houses than four. The applicant came back because the DEP said, "We're not going to let you build four, we'll let you build three."
And that question, the township allowed, we don't see twenty-five hundred square feet per house. That's what we want to see, which I don't see anyway. So what I would suggest is take that big empty lot.
The ordinance that calls for the five percent, how can you comply with that ordinance? And how do you think you'll comply with that?
We do comply with that ordinance, and we wouldn't have got the approval in the first place if we didn't comply with that ordinance. So we complied with the ordinance with respect to open space and density. If we didn't comply with respect to density, this board could not have approved it, and we're not increasing the density, we're decreasing the density. We're not decreasing the open space either. And in actuality, we're leaving more property. The property in the back that's going to be de-restricted is going to be somebody's private property, but there's going to be more rather than less.
One more thing, with the third basement, which...
I mean, third basement...
Third basement is not permitted. You will not be...
Second basement would be not permitted, but it's plus open space also. You may have a second car there, because no, right now, they don't, they sold out parking both sides. I don't have any parking.
So the way the process works is that this board gives an approval for lots, the building department's going to go out and inspect it as it's built, and there's not allowed to be more than one basement.
I understand, the, you're costing thirty-five thousand, when they gave that approval originally, on the back of the property, no, twenty-five thousand. Now it's thirty-eight thousand, thirty-five thousand, ninety-nine thousand. The original approval was, was each person was sorry to get, right? And then add your eight house.
As part of the original approval?
Yes, because this lot was really here. This lot, all of the basement here, and then the actually, now one, two, three, four, five. And they were constantly using the same open space, you know? I got 2015 or 2018, so the final board had to...
Brian, if you put all the lots together, are you complying with that?
Yes.
Could you show how you're...
I can't show you now. I can certainly, as a condition of approval, document that your board engineer...
Okay.
I want to talk to you. Can you please tell me why you're telling him that he can change it and he can do it? Why can't he change it to take that pipe away?
I'm going to get to that in one second. I'm going to get to that, with our engineer.
In other words, in other words, for me to just have to sign is not good enough. I don't want that pipe on the final approved.
Okay.
Because I don't want to have to go tomorrow and file a court...
Nobody wants you to file a court anything?
So I just want them to take that off, and then I'm happy. I don't care what they do.
I understand. Terry, is there a way for us to approve this plan without that pipe showing, you have to have the sewer and water?
I would say yes, and I want to give an observation, I want to give recognition. I'll start with the recognition. If the board wishes to act favorably, the condition of approval is that the forthcoming line submission is not going to show the water main or anything going through Mrs. Leeds' property. That's an easy solution. Okay, is that something that the board can agree to?
Well, realistically, there may be a standard condition in resolutions, where there could be a standard condition that says, you know, the board's approving what they have jurisdiction for a lot of kinds of plans, where they're making... The board approves the plans, but we know that it is maintained, because it's not jurisdiction. So there may be some sort of catch-all that could be added to the resolution.
I mean, there's probably, there's a catch-all, the resolutions that is subject to all third party...
I don't know.
To make it easy, why don't we agree to a condition that we'll remove that pipe from the plans, and then we'll deal with the outside agencies, and when we come up with the solution from the outside agencies, we'll come back, because it's not something this board approves anyway.
Nothing, I'm not happy.
But we're taking it off the plan.
No, I want, I want nothing to do with that pipe on, that's mainly...
And that's what I just agreed, to take it off the plan.
So the next resolution compliance will show this subdivision approval without this pipe going through?
Correct.
And that they need my signature, if they decide, if they decide...
You have a letter from the DEP that says they will not accept an application without your signature.
Right, but I want that in there.
So they can't build it without a DEP approval. Nobody's going to do that. You go to jail for that, and they can't get it, and they can't get it without your signature. So you're protected.
Well, right now, your lot is not going to, is not going to be part of this approval. We're taking this pipe away from your lot. On the next resolution compliance, there will be a plan without your, without this pipe going through your lot. And that's the condition that... Terry, that's a good idea. Thank you. Anyone else in the public theater? Anyone else in the public theater? Seeing no one, I propose to the public. Any board members have any further comments? I'll take a motion from.
I'd like a motion to approve this change. The conditions of Mr. Flannery showing how it's a form of change, including this additional lot and with the pipe removed from this.
If we approve some open space, it is a non-admitted prior resolution. Very much inclined to carry that action.
If it complies with the ordinance, I'm fine with prior acceptance of the grant. Everybody else is. Is there a second on the motion? Can I? Before you, Mr. Chairman. We had hub off on the submission waivers. I just asked the board, I saw a vote on that as well. In this part, pardon the motion, the architect will do that one.
Yeah.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Gruberger.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Strato. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We need Justin back. John, number four, I'm not going to say.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Hi.
Mr. Franklin will share the next application, which is SB 2018 AA, based in Bydlos Braca. It's amended to change the site plan exemption and pool to the previous school on Corbett Road. But the record recital, Mr. Isaacson has arrived as well. Or will Carrie start off? Oh, sorry. As this is amended to pre-去掉 new site plan exemption, Carrie is not prepared to send a review letter, but has the plan, the reasonable plan. He's ready to answer questions on that. The applicant, however, is providing her own professional and will walk through.
Yeah, Chairman, as the applicant is going to indicate, they received average approval through the zoning department to construct an in-ground pool in the rear of the property. I believe the board has copies of the Nashville plan that were prepared by Charles Sermani. The in-ground pool is shown more, slightly more than 10 feet from the rear property line, which is the accessory side door setback. I did a cursory review of Nashville. Actually, I'm going to use this one with the applicant's student's activity. The only other waiver I believe is necessary within the board's acceptance of the amended approval is that technically speaking, that pool is within the landscape buffer, which would be 25 feet non-residential, pure non-residential. The board will have to take into account what's around this pool on those side.
Thank you. Good evening, Mary Morinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Bydlos Braca Inc. As Terry indicated, we are here this evening as this applicant applied for a building permit approximately one year ago, even a little over one year ago, to install a pool for their existing growth school. The township issued the permit. Then, when they came to get their final inspection and get their certificate of approval, we were told that we need to go in front of the planning board. Initially, we were told to follow it as a correspondence matter, which we did. And then we were told that the board would like to treat this as an amended site plan approval. But I guess it's an amended site plan exemption since the initial approval was actually a change of use site plan exemption. So we are here this evening following all instructions just so the board understands this pool is in. And as I said, the permit was issued last year. They began construction last year and the pool is in. And what we are requesting at this point is for the board to vote favorably on this amended site plan exemption application so that they can get their certificate of approval and actually use the pool. I'm going to ask that Brian sworn, so Brian can actually provide the testimony to show that this pool, that even, that with the pool there, everything still complies other than I would agree with Terry that we should request that waiver for the pool being in the landscape buffer area. Can I ask you to, trouble you to have Brian sworn?
Of course. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. And two exhibits, A1 is the tax map showing where the property is. It's on the corner of Taco Way and Corbett Road West. It's, I'm sure the board is familiar with the area. If you come down Oak Street and you turn on Taco Way, there's, it's in the industrial park. So there's industrial buildings, parking lots and disorder of it. The A2 is the change of use plan was proposed. And there were two recreation areas. The north of the recreation area is where this pool is. So the pool is within the landscape buffer. But the recreation area that was approved as part of this was also in the landscape buffer. And the pool is recreation, so it is consistent with the approval that's granted. You can see the school has a parking lot, parking that forms of the ordinance. And this is a pool that fits in well, it's safe, and it'll be well managed. The board has no problem with any of the neighbors and no safety or help.
Any questions, any board members?
Just one, Brian. Is the vinyl fence around the entire thing?
Sure.
The vinyl fence.
The pool will be completely fenced, yes.
Probably because I'm just trying to show the chain link that's on the, probably not. But I can't tell that the vinyl fence is showing on the inside, it's stored around the deck. But it is a vinyl fence around.
I can't know if it's not. I don't know if there's a solid fence on the east side of the property right now. And we, Mr. Isaacson, we did, we made it seem fun all the way down. I don't know what's there with the applicant, unfortunately.
The representative of the school actually had a business trip out of town and is not in town. I can find out what's there. I can find out what's there, or I guess, you know, the board obviously has the right to make whatever requirement.
What's on the other property, actually, trees or open?
The property to the door, it's a park.
It's a park.
Yeah.
I would imagine for parks to be going.
I can't imagine there isn't.
I can't imagine either. I'm just saying, it's not in here on the lot. It'll be an issue. As for privacy flats.
There has to be, there has to be some sort of privacy fence around that pool.
I'm just pointing out.
And for safety.
Yeah, I would agree to have a privacy fence.
Okay.
Are you any further questions? Over to the public, the public who's to speak, I mean. Well, the public, what's your pleasure?
I'd like a motion to approve the application.
Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Roll call please.
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Gruberger.
Yes.
Mr. Strato.
Yes.
Do you guys like that slide?
Yes.
Mr. Gruberger.
Yes.
Thank you. Next application is SB 2062. This is an extension, it's actually the third extension where it's being approved by the site. The school campus has in your stack of letters, positive the original three resolution as well as to create an extension. And if you feel obligated to invite the board that this extension is now a letter of acceptance where the building has stayed, campus only applies to the X standard, only applies to accredited institutions. This application is not, as time has ever really approved. The campus campus is not required of an institute to be credited. So oftentimes, when we're approving extensions and everyone asks me, have the zoning department changed, I'm going to say, in this case, no, everything is not changed. This is where the application is required.
Jerry?
I don't have any comments, Chairman.
Good evening, Mary Morinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Yeshiva Ruachatorah Inc. Actually, I'm going to clarify a little bit on what Ally said. But we are here this evening to request an extension for the approval for this planned educational campus. Approval was granted under application SB 2062, pursuant to a resolution that was adopted on April 29th, 2014, and memorialized at the meeting held on May 20th, 2014. Just to point out, that ordinance change that Ally referred to, which changed the definition of a planned educational campus, actually went into effect prior to the date that this was passed in the first place. It actually went into effect shortly after the date that we filed the application. So it didn't apply to the application, but prior to approval and certainly prior to the granting of the first extension. This, there was an extension granted on this last year. That extension gave a one-year extension and extended the approval through June 30th, 2018. The applicant still hasn't, still isn't in a position to commence construction. One of the main reasons being because this is such a unique, I don't even know what word to use, but I was getting such a unique concept that really only exists in Lakewood. They've had some difficulty with the financing. I don't even think they've completed all the approvals on it. But the main issue is really the financing issue. The most recent changes to the ordinance, which have been changed since the date that you granted the last extension, don't affect the application in the sense that it would necessitate any new variance relief. There have been changes to the campus ordinance. They would not necessitate the granting of any new variances. The only change that would have affected the application from a variance standpoint was the change that changed the actual definition. And like I said, that was passed long before you granted the extension last year. And I'm pretty certain that it was actually passed before you even passed the initial resolution for this and that it had gone into effect right after the filing of the application, prior to the date that you actually heard this in the first place. And I would request is a one-year extension on this. This will surely be resolved within the next year. Actually, we're very, very, very close. And I would really ask the board to think this to vote favorably. This applicant has spent a tremendous amount of money in reliance upon this approval and is really, really finally very close to being able to get started on this project.
Hey, do you have any questions? All of the support members?
Would this be the last extension?
It's one to be said there, I only wanted to say just extension. But I thought I did grant early to make two reservations, so this would be the last. I don't want to take one from the front of the board that were two extensions there.
There were two? Okay, because I only found one, bud.
So this would be the last.
Yeah, that's fine.
And so it did expire in June. If you were to extend it, it would be retroactively to when this expired from June.
Right, so it would expire on June 30th of 2019.
This would be 35, as mentioned?
I would be previous to that. Yeah, this is.
Ally, you're certain that there were two? I only saw one.
I don't know if I see.
I don't, I read the resolution, I definitely read the resolution this afternoon and I thought there was only, that it had only been one. The Permit Extension Act had extended that. I think the Permit Extension Act extended it through June of 2017.
We had an extension July 2016 and then we had an extension July 27.
Yeah, but I don't know if we needed the one in 16 because the permit, I think they came in and maybe requested an extension and then we figured out that it was extended by the Permit Extension Act.
If you put question on, if you requested the extension, if you needed it, you get to bang that one year and ask for the gap.
But what was, did the Amendment Act expire?
I don't remember if it expired in 16 or 17.
Did you file this? Because we filed for one should have been those.
That's what I think it was.
Right, Ally, that's what it was.
You don't need one year anyway.
But we're fine with one year.
I just, I thought for the applicant's purposes at least, they should just know if it's the final one or not.
I think the answer is it's not, even though there were actually two, because that first one was actually filed in an abundance of caution before the Permit Extension Act.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that more so. But I think for purposes of tonight, it's relevant because I believe there are three allowable, so.
Yeah, one should definitely be sufficient. Like I told you, we really are very close finally to getting this done.
What, I'm curious, who's zones is it? I'm sorry, I.
Hold on. Hold on, that resolution would say, hold on, I have it. I think I have it all on.
R20 residential.
R20, single-family residential, so I had it.
We did, we passed recently that can't be super free to some way with the R20. But that may not be that beneficial for this property anyway. It's not like it's an old pool where they can find and get it.
It's Rabbi Berger's Yeshiva, if that helps. Yeshiva Ruachatorah's Rabbi Berger's, the best manager currently in Rancho.
All right, do you have any more questions on this? Do we have a motion?
It's an extension.
It's an extension, it's an extension of time, I don't think it's a public period.
Do you have a public right to turn to Adam? I would be, I don't get it.
You can do it in a little amount of caution if you like.
I think we should do it.
Okay, I'll move the motion to granted when you reach back.
I'll second.
Have the motion approved, I have a second. Any questions on the motion? Roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Gruberger.
Yes.
Mr. Strato.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Gruberger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
The next application is SB 2335. This is the major subdivision, creating eight lots from three. For 1303, we were holding LLC. I'll just remind us of, I know there was a discussion about affecting the neighboring subdivision and whether or not that need to be included in the plan at that date.
I'm more of a.
If you want to swear the jury?
Terry wanted to go with versus zoning letter? Oh, you want that? Trevor, you want to go?
All right, all right.
Chairman, my reading from our July 8 review of third submission waivers on page three of the letter. We request to make, including no conscious manly features of 20 of the IAS architectural drawings. We support the P waivers of the 20. Site features have a little way back on the plans. With respect to the IAS waiver, we support that waiver since the land has been seriously disturbed. Provided that the site contains known marginalities rates. We'll get further testimony on that shortly. And finally, submission waiver, which requires of architectural drawings. We require information at a minimum that you're not going to be guiding any setbacks other than what you're seeking to wait for. And then on the zoning, I'm going to give a letter, comment to variances or requested for, from the buyer area, for one of the lots, as well as no critical setback. For the same lot, there is assigned setback variance for the distance by the side, which is going to remain. The off-street parking within 65 feet of rim line, a pro- using setback for its own half-lane climate. Finally, under design waivers, the design waivers, so on purpose side, Walter Walter Rappine frontage, as well as tree trees and buck race of lot 3957, as well as design waivers for code lots which are not per- legal or rated to be waived. I believe that's all we need, Chairman.
I believe that's correct. Deacon, Chairman Adam Fenton, on behalf of the applicant. I can't defend swearing of them lines.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give to the board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Professional engineer, professional planner, Lakewood, New Jersey.
I'm going to attempt to work through the project, work through the, is it a question? Yes. Our proposal is to subdivide property, mainly known as, known over here as Copper Kettle Bay. We've nine. Route 9, on the east side of Route 9, we are proposing to subdivide a portion of the rear of the property, create three duplex lots, and we will be using portions of one duplex lot as part of the Blue River Way development, which is already approved, and will also use the one of the open space lots in the development, which is three [inaudible]. As Ally had mentioned, we do have to come back, and I believe it's already in Ally's office, to amend our original major subdivision approval for Blue River Way to move the tot lot from the lot it's on now to the lot that is all the way at the rear of the development. The subdivision act, currently the tot lot is supposed to be on lot 39.42, and it's indicated as an open space lot for the tot. And if we're coming in to amend that, to move the tot lot to existing lot 39.29, which is all the way at the end of the [inaudible]. So that's an application you'll see either at the next couple of meetings. We already have been to the planings for it to, for it to be due and all the other.
Mr. Franklin, and this application will be approved subject to -- as we had talked about in that, and then [inaudible].
Well, I would say that it will be subject to.
Subject to something that hasn't been received yet, let alone [inaudible].
Well, our [inaudible]. We did submit it a few weeks ago.
So [inaudible].
May I ask something, Chairman?
Yes.
Would the board like to act favorably on this application? No plan to want to be filed until that is resolved. I understand.
I don't have.
Either way, [inaudible]. You put a position, will you measure?
I don't kind of know my plan of [inaudible].
We didn't approve the [inaudible]. [inaudible]. Is that an application served?
So what happens if that application doesn't get approved and this board already?
The application is delivered. You can't file anything.
Provide approval to the other amendment, but we're just [inaudible].
Right. It is useless, this application. And quite first, if you did the other application first, you could say, well, not anything until we [inaudible].
Okay. As far as the variance is requested, this application, the one remaining lot, which is currently [inaudible], we're requesting lot area variance at that lot. One acre required. We have this [inaudible] 29 feet, two one acres, so about 360 feet short of that lot big, or 560 feet short of that lot big, a forming one acre lot.
Does that do anything to the parking area from the diner?
I'll get to that. That's my next. Thank you, John. Just one step back.
Chairman, if I may, just a moment. You've seen I've been over here several times tonight. The recording keeps setting off, and now the [inaudible] is telling me that there's nothing wrong with the recording. Clearly, we're having recording issues. We didn't have the video camera as a backup, but just for the public's knowledge, the board's knowledge, the recording won't stay on.
The -- so that was in zoning. That's the number two variance, which is the lot area variance, which I would indicate is a very de minimis reduction in the lot area. I don't think it'll have any impact on any of the lots around it. The zoning ordinance for the zoning plan, we're proposing, and we had started work on a commercial retail building for that lot. Now, that gets down to the variances, lots three, four, and five in the letter. Lot three is a variance for the existing front yard setback for the Copper Kettle Diner. The existing is 23 feet from the right away, where 75 feet is required. We're requesting that variance tonight, because we don't want to tear the building down right now. So we've already questioned that variance, and the building is staying until the new site plan is approved for a retail building. Same with the sign location, where we have [inaudible]. The sign looks like it's right on the edge of Route 9. So we just want to leave the sign until we redevelop the site. And number five in Terry's letter is parking within 65 feet of Route 9. Again, there are parking spaces across the front of the building. It's just the way the building's been since, I think, forever. Forever. That's a good term. I remember it that way from when I was a kid, so it's got to be that way for 50 years. We're not going to keep it that way. We're not requesting those variances be perpetual. As soon as we tear the building down, we remove the parking, we take the sign down, those variances go away, and any new variances we would create with a new site plan, we would be back to this board to request. Again, the rest of the comments in Terry's letter are technical in nature with regard to preparation of subdivision and some things that need to be corrected. Again, we're providing sidewalks, we're providing shade trees and utility easements, everything we need. As far as the footprints of the building, my testimony, we've all complied with seven foot side yard setback variances. A lot of the duplexes in this development have had custom footprints just for what people want and what they can feel on the lots, so I would immediately develop the same way, but we are not requesting any side yard, rear yard, or front yard setback variances at this time, and that was why we requested a waiver from providing architectural plans. They will be prepared as if this project is approved. Every lot will have four parking spaces, most likely one basement apartment. Comply with all the other township requirements.
My good chairman, I'm actually, we are testing the design waivers over the nine or with respect to the [inaudible].
I'm sorry. I wanted to make the variance. Design waivers, at this point, we are requesting design waiver for curving sidewalk on River Avenue, street trees, and above. We will provide those things, again, when we come back for the application for a site plan for that one acre lot.
And I was just a little confused before, so you're saying that the plans that you said you submitted in July, that is for the, that's the application for the site?
I totally [inaudible]. Switched to tot lot. Seven from that. If both those, if this application or this application are approved, so we'll have a recite by the commercial on the [inaudible]. All that is, at this point, that we can [inaudible].
And why didn't you give me the one day of the? Well, because the major subdivision, there have been some lots sold already in that subdivision, where we have, where they had deposits on the lots. So it makes it very difficult to amend that site plan and bring this subdivision into it all at one time. We also have to notify anybody who has made deposit on the lots that we're moving the tot lot, and at the end, we have to take the amended subdivision to, I don't remember which court it, we have to take it to a judge and actually get them to, which we'll go over at the next hearing, but approve the movement of the tot.
And then just the board, you said, if you see the next application, that tot lot is only complement size, so it's not about trying to take away from that application [inaudible]. Why should you expect overall subdivision?
I just think the court before the board says, the one thing that's in there is a lot for approval, actually approved first. Look at it. Honestly, I think it's either way. If we came in and said we wanted to amend that one, you'd go, well, why are you doing that now? You don't have, you don't have the other subdivision. We just couldn't.
We would agree with this [inaudible]. Again, we would agree with the condition of all this, and obviously, this application left nowhere if we didn't get the other application.
But how, I suppose the other location in the existing subdivision?
It is, because I was just pointing that out, that while there are [inaudible], we're taking that subdivision to [inaudible].
Why do you move the lot?
Again, we're taking the [inaudible]. The tot lot is a little three thousand square foot wagered property, which is in front of these lots, 150, 39.54 to 39.56. So right now, we're on a little three thousand square foot wager. We're moving it, again, all the way to the end of the [inaudible], and then the new lot is 5,097 square feet. So we're making the lot 60% bigger than it is now, and it's actually [inaudible] lot compared to the one we're on.
At the end of the [inaudible].
But who'd they get, Mr. Berger, because if they were to stay where it is, it's blocking access to the new roadway, which the lots are creating as a result of this subdivision.
Correct. So how will you get those lots?
The tot lot will be, will be the front yard of the new duplex.
It's on top of that.
On top of it, yeah. This is, this is the [inaudible]. Two complexes, that Blue River Way comes into Route 9, like I said, [inaudible] to the right. The lots you're asking about are these adjacent lots. So the rear of lots 3943 and 3946 are back up to the side on Route 9. Those two roads are now supposed to be connected. This is all one road. That's all, that's just the [inaudible].
The Copper Kettle property is very deep, so they're cutting off pieces.
Can you show where the property, where the Copper Kettle property is on that map?
Right, on [inaudible]. Copper Kettle Diner.
Here's the [inaudible].
So this subdivision was built around the top of Copper Kettle Lot. There's a [inaudible]. One point, the whole back of this lot and.
So you didn't move the tot lot to [inaudible].
Right, Copper Kettle Diner.
Now, all those [inaudible] up there, are they counting on that tot lot?
No, but they get.
They're getting one, it's all the way down.
Correct. Part of the lot, and this one little three thousand square foot tot.
Like, so now they have to go one way to the end.
[inaudible]. And agree, and everyone has their, but they are getting, vice versa, but they wait again, because they're [inaudible].
And that relocation will still be somewhere, so that's an application, so that application is subject to board approval. And if the board doesn't like it, it does approve it, then today that application.
It's [inaudible]. So a couple things happening, we're beginning to make, we will add more property. We're also making the existing subdivision.
Any more questions?
And with that, [inaudible]. There's no other comments we have in Terry's letter, which we can agree prior. Yes.
Okay. Any board members have any questions? All right, open to the public?
Is there an exit on to move down? From which I would give up?
Well, the new lots, the new residential lots will front on Blue River Way. They'll front on an existing red, under construction residential lot. The commercial lot, which is currently at the Copper Kettle, that will continue to access the tot. That has direct highway [inaudible].
Been a traffic study on that?
No, we have an ancient traffic study, everything in the future, whether we did that now or later. Again, there's an existing building today.
If that's [inaudible] or is that related to being [inaudible]? But typically, the subdivision like this is not [inaudible].
It will be removed. We're just.
As part of the subdivision, it's [inaudible].
Here's no problem with moving it as long as, if this application is called, and the [inaudible].
I see you, now if you need a site plan, that has [inaudible].
The [inaudible].
Got it.
All right, any more questions from board? All right, open to the, beaming to the public. Open to the public. Governor, what's your pledge on this application?
How will the motion do? Approve the application?
Will the motion be approved? At the end of second?
Second? Thank you.
Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg.
Yes.
Mr. Iveson.
Yes.
Mr. Garfield. Thank you.
I'm trying to be a little less confusing with ourselves.
And the next application is SB 2286, made by [inaudible] for the park, IIA, II, LLC, to make the site plan for additional warehouse building on an existing site.
I'm reading from our July 18 letter. First, item is under subdivision waivers. It includes no [inaudible].
Please do.
Beaming to the folks.
Go ahead, Mr. Franklin.
Natural artificial water sources, et cetera, manmade [inaudible]. EIS and tree protection management, as in the [inaudible]. Support the current application for [inaudible]. If the approval is granted, we will likely require additional [inaudible]. With respect to the EIS waiver, we support the request, sets the site [inaudible]. Subdivision waiver, they request for tree protection management. We note that existing trees will have to be addressed and compliance with the pre-ordinance. As part of an approval, therefore, we support that waiver for submission purposes only. If the board must back it, my notice, or if the board must [inaudible]. Moving on to zoning, there's a non-destroying front yard setback to Summer Avenue. We're going to hear testimony regarding [inaudible]. In front of the press board, and the boundary survey shows the building to be searched five and a half feet from Railroad Street versus the 100 minimum, however, that could be waived by the [inaudible].
I believe you see the letter, right? Did that make any difference?
I believe.
So that's not event divided, or you're agreeing with [inaudible].
Yeah, I thought it was.
I'm sorry.
And then finally, you'll get testimony as to [inaudible]. And then on your design waivers, you can [inaudible]. Unless Railroad Street is vacated or approved.
vacated or approved, any design waivers requested since the existing site approaches within the Railroad Street right of way. Then, design waivers are requested with respect to by the side along the roadfront, on Street Street, that is common in the middle part. Design waivers also requested screening of EDC, E equipment, as well as the design waiver that represents one C B within the interior site.
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Claverton, representative of the applicant. Would you have, to add on to what Terry indicated, you have approximately 21 acre site here. We're looking to add an additional rateable for the township, an approximately little bit shy of 28,000 square foot office warehouse building. You will hear testimony in a minute that both those uses are permitted in the zone. We're in the M1 zone, and basically based upon the fact that they are permitted uses we are before the correct board. If I count at this time, so we're in, Mr. Sidhu saying, who has testified to the board?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, if you can just walk us through the application and then Terry's letter. Does the board accept Mr. Sidhu's credentials? We ask that. Would you like the credentials on the record? Tell us.
That's no problem.
Hi, yes.
Have you been here before?
Yes, I have. I'm a licensed degree civil engineer here in Florida, master's degree in civil engineer here in New Jersey, up in the license engineer in 1987 in New Jersey. I'm also planning for a member, used to be planning for a member at Marburg County.
Proceed. Sir, if you can, just walk us through the site and address Terry's letter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have a site located at block one and block four or nine, which is located on Pine Street, some avenue to the west, and Lake Street to the north. This particular site is located within the M1 zone, industrial zone. All areas around it are both industrial units, and existing units on the site are also industrial units. There are already two existing large sized buildings on the property, one closer to Pine Street. And I want to model the river where basically existing. What we are going to do is remove 115, 115 parking stalls that are currently paved at this time, remove those, and relocate some of those parking stalls, and put in a total of 27,772 square feet, basically, the footprint of the building would be 106 by 262. And, like, front rolling area on both sides, and that kind of, there are several waivers that have been requested for, for this application. The first one is parkage within 200 feet. As I mentioned to you, really, that's not applying once a site is going to need additional coverage for the parkage, because we are building the park in the included existing buildings. We are really not doing anything beyond a full, uh, property line, so therefore, that relief was being requested. So initially, contours within 200 feet, we show contours on the property on the plan that we have, point again. Everything is contained within the site, and repeating the existing buildings, that's why we had to teach the software, that relief as well. Flood lane and redlands, redland bumper, as I said, is all in this inside, paved area, all what we're doing is digging up parking area, relocating it, including 27,000 square feet. And natural, artificial, artificial water sources, what's given is nothing on the site in this site, natural or artificial. And based on what we are proposing, we are requesting for a leave on the environmental impact statement for this particular site. We do not have much tree vegetation on the site, as I said, pretty much everything saved, so we're not moving any vegetation on the site. Now, getting down to the fact that I explained to you, we have approximately 40,000 square feet building, and within the building, there are two areas, as needed, which is total area, as needed, would be 36,400 square feet. There is an excessive shore line, an existing water line, two, three connections, and we have come before a contest, that's why it's not a circulation to them. See there again. And so zoning, since I, as I mentioned to you, that this particular is property, the zone M1, and the 20 units on the property are forming through the M1 zone and supporting units of forming to the M1 zone. Existing property located to the west and east are also at present time zoned as M1, and if they utilize it, in this regard.
So do you testify as to the design waivers?
Yes. As I said, the parkage within 200 feet, contours of areas within 200 feet of the site boundaries, flood lanes, redlands, and redland buffers, natural and artificial water sources between shoreline, manmade features within 200 feet, there are environmental impact statement and tree protection and management plans. Since there are no trees in this area, therefore, we are requesting for that relief as well.
If you follow back the progress of our terms, you have.
Adam, along with that, if you have a copy of the LIC approval on the line claim of that package, it's available on the people drive for the public.
Yes, so we've spent the package within use, and we're only asking for one of you.
Basically, existing buildings have, where it exists, and both of them, both buildings will be requesting for liquid industrial commission for leave from 100 years, 100 foot setback to 100 foot setback.
Both those are existing. And with choice of parking, we intend to suggest parking, please, as required, on both sides, what we are, what we have.
Sure. Basically, existing, based on what we have, existing warehouses in the law, we have a total requirement existing, we have 300 employees, 20 parking stalls and executives, the 340 stalls under existing conditions we acquire. Under proposed conditions, we add a base of 30 parking stalls for employees. In some total, combined together, we would be needing requiring 330 employee parking and 20 executive parking. What we would be providing on the site is 402 parking stalls and 18 top bases.
So just to be clear, so once the site will be completely filled out, required, we fully can require 400.
That is correct.
And that leads up to, I think, Terry's other comment for, should there be any changes throughout to the neighbor street, that we have to rule anything? We have sufficient area and invested parking, which we think we have to look at parking space, we just don't apply 100%.
And it also applies to the area of 400, give or 49 area combined parking stalls.
Are there two shifts that work in this building, or just one shift?
Just one.
Okay. I was wondering about parking, if there are two shifts.
But hey, I mean, if you have 425 spots.
Right now, you have 487 spots, and you're adding another 27,000 square foot building, you're increasing the number of spots.
We have excess parking.
Most spots are not taken up. They're empty, they're all empty.
If we were in capacity, we wouldn't be able to accommodate, we wouldn't be able to attend the park. We have sufficient excess parking, the testimony will give, we have 70 excess spots, after doing all the new.
What's being used?
My testimony is that we have sufficient parking, that it's under you on the floor.
Any more questions?
What's going to be stored in the warehouse? Are there going to be a lot of deliveries and stuff like that?
We have a compartment going down.
Those are going down, on both sides, as they're basically used, is basically 125 by 50 foot deep, and that's where they come in and.
Room for traction trailer?
Yes, sir. They are all counted for.
Terry, what you hear, if you wrote in zoning, in paragraph one, you wrote it appears, there would be warehouse, is it permitted?
Well, we wanted to testify, we want to testimony as to the use and confirming testimony that it meets the M1 requirement, and I think that your testimony is that it is appropriate. So they're not seeing a use for it, as if that either one could be a source.
Correct. Okay, one question over here.
I have two questions. What is needed product? Can you, you, help me?
I am not sure.
I believe this is. Do you respect that? We know right now if it's a schedule or not, it's coming in there, but there's a bunch of different businesses currently, and it'll be the same type of use that are in the other building on the site. Both you were in the warehouse, whatever it is.
Most will use both buildings there, and I'm sure they have similar tenants.
I believe this came up as a claim of you, essentially, if I recall, to an Amazon business type deal, where you have one person maybe getting out of the warehouse, boxing things up, storing them, pulling them out, but I don't think.
No, we think.
Any further questions? Open it to the public, anyone in the public who wants to be heard on this application. Open it to the public. Gentlemen, what's your.
I'll move to a.
My first question, I have the meeting over on the permission of design waiver. I have to say, uh, she needs to.
Okay, design waiver.
Someone's coming to say, can you write it in the document? Someone's coming to say, can we definitely.
Okay, do you put it in your motion? Okay, I'll start.
Okay. Any questions? Second. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Roberger.
No.
Mr. Panzoff.
Yes.
Mr. Iverson.
Yes.
Mr. Garros. Yeah, thank you. Next application is SB 2080. This is an amended major site plan. This is a previously proved and constructed office building. One of the requirements was with respect to a pathway, that the application is now looking to have weight. The reason it's coming up is because it is actually listed on a law estimate, and they won't release the law because that has been obstructed, so you don't want. You should have, um, in the review letter, that a number of things were submitted by Mr. Roberger.
Mr. Chairman, John Dogg, pleased to represent the Cedar Bridge Corporate Campus Park. As Ali spelled out, there is an issue, because this is shown, and we can't get the plots released. It's an issue that was created in 2002. 2002, the campus's general development plan was approved. It was vacant property. It was a 20-year plan. It wasn't a specific site plan like you see most Tuesday nights. It was a broad idea. The things that were specific were the streets, but they showed some things, including this. But at the same time, and I've read the minutes, they said there would be a path along the Boulevard and Pine, in and next to the right of way. Mr. Banis described it as a path adjacent to the roads. They said the path would be actually determined later, and didn't know at the time where the buildings would go, and it would be all dependent upon where the buildings would go. On the map, they showed a small basin, stormwater basin, and they said, the alignment and construction of the path in that area shall be determined during the final design of the stormwater basin. So we're trying to reconcile what happened 16 years ago with how the park has been subsequently developed. In this area, I, on behalf of Eric's Holding, Michael Baumann's company, got an approval for a subdivision that took part of the corporate park and put it into four particular lots. One to house the beautiful building that is now on the Boulevard of the Americas at 100. One was the old site of the basin, which now is to be a hotel, which has been approved by you, and the basin was moved from where it was to be to next door. So now, instead of having the meandering path, as it was described 16 years ago, basically on public property or next to the roadway, it runs. It would run, and I'll trace it with my finger, you have to scroll back, along from Pine, very close to the basin, then curve around in front of the, through the basin, the hotel will be built. The hotel is going to be built as far as Green, is that the hotel site? Through there, back behind the parking lot, and meander right next to the LNUA facility there, going past some significant utility structures of the building, and back out to the end. At this point, it really makes little sense. The idea of it being along the roadway is now it's on private property. It constitutes what was unforeseen in 16 years ago, a security risk to the Eric's Holding Building, LTC at 100, as well as potentially some of the facilities that are there in fence with the LNUA. So this is why we're before you, on behalf of the safety and security of buildings, those private properties, because it makes little sense to try to ask you to remove it for the reasons stated. I have with me to be sworn, Jack Mueller, affirm.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give before the board tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm. Jack Mueller, 641 First Street, CEO of the Super East.
Jack, you've heard me speak for a couple of minutes about the history. I wasn't sworn, you are. Was it accurate?
Yes.
Fill in the blanks as to how general the 2001, 2 approval was. You didn't approve any specific buildings, your locations, or subdivision lines?
No. The general vote is that this concept, that that's not true. Just subdivision, just, you know, general plan, and neither. Danny Bannister, the chairman of that, he wanted to have a meandering path along the road, along the property. Which I put in, I put in eight thousand feet of, of the meandering path. One of the meandering paths, the original path, wanted to follow the long new avenue, but the basin was here then. And we moved that permission from the after, moved the base, and it just became Allo Townsite, which planning were at approved. This is bottom building, LTC here, this is by the mountain, it's approved. And I put in, there's all the, I put in the meandering path along Pine Street, all of the avenues, say, up to Seer Bridge, and all of Boulevard of Americas, up to this, up to the end of the park. I've done that. This meandering path, which goes in between the hotel, which we're now going between hotel and basin, come around the icebound parking lot, come around and end over here. It makes no sense and it is a security issue. We don't want people walking next to basin. And we appear testimony from a boundary representative of, uh, that, uh, they don't want to have a public park in our own building. So we're asking the board that the path came up, because we didn't realize that there had this path on the plan. Came up with, obviously, we find.
Go for the question. Do you have any questions, anyone?
It has paved, it's a paved path?
It doesn't exist here, we're asking.
He said you have it around.
Oh, 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 no, this is, uh, it's a paved path.
Paved path?
That's the property's regular, like, it's a left sidewalk.
A sidewalk?
But it's, uh, it's called a meandering path, because it doesn't go straight.
So this is the plank, calls for a sidewalk to go.
Right, exactly.
Could you put it on the other side, on, on New Hampshire? On Pine and New Hampshire?
Could be, could.
It wasn't.
Not our property, not our property. This is hotel, this, you know, not our property.
It's not part of the Cedar Bridge property?
And it's, oh, oh, the only thing that Cedar Bridge owns right now, the basin.
But that's not where it's proposed anyway, originally. Was, was proposed there originally anyway?
No, no.
What was the basin originally?
The, the basin originally, it had a corner, but the basin was moved over to the, to the, to the, the west, and now the corner property got to the hotel property. So there was no path ever proposed around there anymore. Will, will it be sidewalk on, along Pine and New Hampshire?
At that, we put in the, we put in the sidewalk. It's going to go something over post, uh, mine now.
I didn't represent, uh, in the hotel and whatever the hotel was required to, they were, weren't required to their side. And, and I don't believe there's any sidewalks, uh, by where the, I don't know if the, by the.
Now, you see lots of people walk in there. Yeah, it's just a clarify, clarify, it's a way to use the path. Is that, it's side, it's not concrete, it's actually asphalt, right?
It's asphalt.
Asphalt, yeah, I think, I think we're using sidewalks. And it's a man, yeah, this is, this is an asphalt path that runs through.
In fact, it was referenced made in the O two to it being a bicycle path, which, which is encouraged. People who are in effect, if you will trespassers, but for the.
No, this is not sidewalk, this is more of an aesthetic type of, uh,
Right.
You know, we haven't had classes, people walk around, work, they can walk out, you know.
This is, you were on the board at that time, right?
With, I'm sorry.
You were on the board, is that not correct?
No. There is a, there's a. There's a significant Doyle family, which I wasn't related, and then, uh.
I thought it was like, like, what, I thought all these were.
Hi, can you state your name and address, please?
Robert, one, one, five, five.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Um, I refer to them, um, who owned the property, Eric. So it came up, Eric decided we were trying to catch funds, so we were, we put on this list. And Oliver wasn't aware of what that had, and, um, and when it came up, and we showed us the marketing, and we actually had a code behind the parking lot. It's not, not, it's not, it's just an authority path, because a lot of are working late, especially during the dark hours, especially in the winter. And it was a kind of, it's a security issue, you know, before going to the parking lot, our cars, and had people in the back of it, you know, riding it. So that's why we just wanted to get removed, that way, you know, to go ahead and shut the fire, so that we're all working here already. And everybody's in love with it, like, you know, that, uh, that is a problem.
When you say we love it, how many, we are, you know, how many.
So we're now, we're now in seventy-five people, employees in the building. The majority of us, um, have their company about, and I don't, we don't.
Is parking in the front and the rear sidewalks around the building?
Yes. Yeah, I'm saying employees had no problems with sidewalks or basically, you know, the sidewalks around them by building, people on their homes, or, you know, whatever they do, but.
And as I said, the walk, the, the, where it's supposed to be, we do, we do, I think, uh, air conditioning facilities, uh,
Yes.
Watering, plumbing facilities.
Right, I'm saying, by the side of the building, specifically where they want to actually, there's like, you know, these facility houses or wherever they are, you know, it's not even a conscious, you know, it's a.
How could you take the path, what would you do, just take a dead end there?
There, there is no path on this idea.
The eight thousand feet that was spoken of is a long, a wide way, and is there?
Yeah, right, it's, it's on the. I mean, the path sucks.
Right, oh, oh, it's, it's, it's on the underside, the path, we're going to go from pine to here. So it would be that discreet part of.
Just that path, the other one, you could still continue and just go. There wouldn't be a blank spot where.
That's correct, that's correct. Yes.
So we're, we're changing out a span and a food rule from sixteen years ago, is that what we're trying to do?
We're trying to mo, bring that up to modern times because what they did was a general conceptual plan. Now that we have the specifics of where the site is and that this is private property, to put a seeming public amenity that would interfere with the use and the security of the people working in private property.
It's been a good sixteen years ago.
Yeah, it wasn't a middle now, it's just.
Yeah.
Now, now it's.
Exactly.
It was a vision. You know, what's your position on this?
I make a motion to, uh, remove the path.
I would second.
I'm going to have a motion to second, any discussion?
You want, you want to open it to the public there?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we know this. All right, roll call, please.
Prepare to be chairman.
We need to open the public, we always tell, we always look bad.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public who should be heard on this case? Welcome to the public.
Okay, now, Mr. Flatt, I'll promote. Now I'll make a motion to remove the path.
I'll second that motion.
Remove that?
I'll second.
Both, both, please.
Mr. Garth, Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford.
Yeah.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Graco.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last application for the ninth, chairman, if you want to.
Can you vote?
We have a basic site plan for addition to existing school on Joe Parker Road, applicable to SP twenty-one seven.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Because of the late hour, with your kind indulgence, I would like to reverse what we normally do and bring the rabbi in to talk about the school first, so I can answer your questions, because everything else Glenn will tell you, we agreed to every single condition that, and everything else in the report that, um, Perry says. Perry is the very one that I know of.
What's, what's that?
With your kind permission, I'd like to call Rabbi Lyfer up.
Of you? Yes.
Thank you. And he will affirm?
Good evening, please raise your right hand.
You can't, you affirm, you can't, you will affirm what you said. By putting your right hand, that's, that's, that's an oath of the Jewish, just so you know.
Okay, uh, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. So, Rabbi Lyfer, you are the head of the school, that is the application tonight, that is seeking an extension to put a second floor up, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so zeroing in on Terry's requirements, that he said the first point of testimony, he asked about talking about trash and recycling, okay? You have the existing school, how is the, the, the trash and recycling taking place at the start? It works very well, there's no problems?
No.
The trash is picked up and it works?
Yeah, it's not the guy.
And if the board would grant this application, the, the amount of garbage and the area of garbage would work as well, there would be no problems there? Okay, now, Perry asks for your application on number eleven, the following questions that he wants to know. A, the number of additional and total students proposed to the school. Okay, whether any parents drive and park at the school.
No.
Whether any students will be dropped off and picked up by car.
No.
The proposed drop off and pickup times.
So this is six in the morning, one day gets a car, one night fifteen, in the afternoon, three, four.
Okay, the number of buses that are proposed.
Four, fifteen, plus what we have now, we have now, it's six in the morning, seven in the afternoon, and how they get, they're on one, maybe one bus.
The total amount of proposed employees, I realize that you have a number of employees that are part-time, most employees don't work the whole day, but just give us.
I have any.
Okay. Okay. We have, unfortunately, did not have a chance to give you what a traffic report, which will shock your conscience. A will be level, I'd like to bring this to the evidence.
Here?
The first one I have is sort of, right, I understand, hey, you know what you're talking about. Would you be shocked? I don't think you hear that, Mr. Chairman, that often, though. I, I guess you're indulgent, but we didn't get it within the ten days, we had nine days, therefore we didn't present it, that's why it's presented, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, does the board have any specific questions of Rabbi Lyfer in regard to the school? What's the purpose of the school?
Purpose of the school?
Yes.
School.
Girls?
Girls.
Girls?
Girls.
Girls. And you just adding more to them?
What?
You're just adding more to them? Correct. Sure. Thank you, three questions, a good question. Anybody else, any questions on the board? Okay, if not, I'm bringing Glenn now.
Reverse.
Glenn's taking away, knowing that clock is ticking.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Glenn Lyfer.
Will the board stipulate as to credentials?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, go ahead, Glenn, take it away.
I'm coming to, uh, I reside, uh, at Rabbi Eight K, Ray, Second Foot, uh, existing building, uh, the neighborhood building, I'm expecting where they are. We are requesting, uh, submission waivers, all of it, so sure, traffic report had that, we may, uh, in county, uh, and request a waiver for additional features of housing, building, including the two hundred feet, uh, police, the site plan, so we're clearly welcome to find out on our property. Especially, I appreciate you, we'll show them on the, uh, plans, uh, part of the RIMAC statement, I, uh, three for the later, three for the, uh, time, the official, the, uh, that. This, this issue, like, for the J three, most of those on the, uh, plans, uh, part of the redback state, I do, three for the later, three question, I have to find the conditions, this is that. Basically, we're recognizing all, uh, clean letter, and, uh, as far as building, we have, uh, existing accessory building, uh, which is a, 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 existing school, uh, which has a slightly skewed on the property, on the setback, uh, so the one end of the building is five point two feet off the one, the other end is approximately fourteen feet off the one. We might, that building, uh, our digits, and has a, um, little back, the hand, you have to, it's, 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 uh, some of the, 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 holding, little bit, it's, it's, uh... We are requesting that neighbor, uh, it's fairly far back on property, and, uh... Let's see, I have something here, uh, neighbor, uh, we are glad they police about it, uh, requesting a, uh... Relief, including the buffers, again, the school is existing, and it's located in Mission, we need a property line, uh, and it's existing, and, uh, and, uh... We are opposed to luxury parking on the south side of the Andrews Drive, to the Presley Dale parking, uh, for our school. That parking, approach is in the twenty-fourth side, that setback, along, uh, one ninety point three. Uh, if you remember, we were in recently for a subdivision, and we subceded the backs off of these, uh, the three lines next door. And that reported the property was, uh, sold to the school, and part of that property also was, uh, pending, was, was over, so. So, as far as the parking being, hence, at the neighbor, they understood that was, what was going to happen, uh, as part of the agreement. We applied a, uh, a bunch of line fence, along that property line, and you can see behind, uh, shielded headlights, generally, not a lot of activity in the house, it's cool, like, uh, so it will be, that's, uh... Uh, we just have, uh, presence. Uh, we waived it from applying the bus parking area, uh, we only have a twenty-four mile available, so we, we set aside twelve, uh, twelve feet of, uh, of bus parking spaces, uh, we lose the access on, so we're requesting that waiver, uh, in terms of the rabbi. Site works, they have no problems with the site at this time, everything, buses come in, everybody, uh, can sit and out, so we agree that, that won't have any impact on the, uh, operation of the site. Uh, we request the areas for the existing locations of the, uh, site sign, uh, which is, uh, approximately three feet off the property line, which is bend in the road, and the houses, and the dump on the side, and put it anywhere back, uh, would be visible, and it is an existing condition, and that's been, probably, that in the past. As far as the, uh, the view comments, we think, for those of Perry, uh, we don't have any objection to, uh, the comments, applying all of the comments. And, uh, as indicated, the, uh, the traffic report has, uh, trying to move the ski into the site, are at level A, and, uh, the buses and cars on down the site, it's at a level E, this property, uh... The best, uh, locations for the school to be down there, Joe Parker, a lot of, you know, it's, it's likely to travel, I would say, so, uh, but, uh...
Would you say that one of the things that lends itself from the certain site is because the buildings are so set back far from the road, that really you don't see it going by the road? Is that the parametris?
Yeah, and then the houses on the side, you are, you know, it's, 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 it's back.
The board have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Is anyone living right next to you?
And that's real.
Anyone living in those, you ask, yeah?
Well, they have, there's, there's two houses on those three lots.
There's somebody living-
The lots, there's somebody living in those lots, and we said-
Eventually.
But those houses will be, uh, uh, the new people, old people, they, they, they-
You can't hide it.
Any further questions?
That's okay.
Open it to the public, anyone in the public who should be heard on this?
Anybody?
Please, because if you-
Let the record indicate the sound and silence.
Okay, we got that before nine.
The emptiness of the hall, okay? Uh, Dylan, what you please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to put that basis, is that- I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, good night.
Good to see you.
Yes, yeah, really.
Come back, Amy.
Nice to see you.
Come back again, Amy.
Okay, we have approval, minutes?
I'll, I'll move, you have to put the minute.
I'll second.
Motion- Thank you very, very much. Minutes, all favor?
Aye.
Those okay. Prove bill?
Some move.
Got a motion in a second? All favor?
Aye.
Those okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
You want to watch it, so that you're all right?
Other champion, see if you actually acted over the second, but add, add like this, be done.
What is that?
September, I'll be, he has two, yeah.
Guys, we're doing the tough one.
Um, and, I'm on the Angela, so I put a, I put a, for our next meeting. Yeah, um, so I know the two of you are wanting to watch the recording, but I think I stepped it out, because it was supposed to act on, on the last meeting, or Perry? Um, no, Angela, it's true. I'm, I'm not supposed to, because that may have been for that. So, you'll watch your whole thing with them, you know?
You text you, remind you to watch it.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, um, you know, the, the-
I have, yeah, so, so.
Okay, I just, I didn't keep the comments, I was, I was, I'll have it in my notes, but if you're gonna keep it next meeting, because I will be, yeah, signing there for John, okay? No, uh, now, we have the, we have, from tonight, yeah, that's the type of-
It's the West Kennedy, right?
Yeah.
Right, one's Kennedy, one's Kennedy, right?
No, they're both county ones.
Are they?
One's East and one's West.
So, that's the top part. Two, thank you, you're all, you know.